Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 24th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Hershey.
Here.
Councilmember Colasetti.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin.
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meeting, January 21st, 2025, Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next item is presentations and public input. We'll do the fire department promotions first, and we have seven people being promoted tonight, so I'll turn this over to Fire Chief Demond Dade.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll only have six. One person couldn't make it, so that's all right. But once again, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Marlin and City Council members for allowing us to be here this evening. Tonight is kind of a special, special night. Three years ago, Mayor Marlin helped shed some new light on an old tradition of ours, when she invited the Urbana Fire Department to come right here in council chambers and give us an opportunity to publicly celebrate some of the markers, you know, that are significant in our members' careers. And those things being when they get off of probation, when they complete their probationary year, and anytime they receive a promotion to a different rank within the department. Those milestones are underscored with an oath. They come up here and they give a declaration of the expectation to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of those positions that they hold. And so, tonight, on the dawn of the mayoral election, this, this evening represents one of the last times that Mayor Marlin will get to swear in the members of the Urbana Fire Department. With that, we're going to talk about the first individuals that we're going to bring up. The first individuals that we're going to bring up are three individuals who are finishing their probationary year. In that probationary year, within the first nine weeks, these individuals go to the State Fire Academy. They receive their basic firefighter certification, their hazmat certification, and their vehicle machinery operation certification, which takes about, and then there's an additional four months that they get their EMS training and become a basic EMT. So with that, if Ross Stidinger would come up, Hanson Rikus, and Nick Walker.
I'm going to set this down here because there's nothing on me to clip it to. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Ross Stidin- aye, state your name.
Aye, Ross Stidigus.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of firefighter.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of firefighter.
For the city of Urbana.
For the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champaign, Illinois.
In the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the residents of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the residents of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed or sworn.
So hereby affirmed or sworn.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Tonight, as they come up, Ross will be pinned by his wife Julie. He's also accompanied by his son Lane this evening. Hanson will be pinned by his grandfather, Lonnie Rikus, who just recently retired as a volunteer of 52 years, and he was an assistant chief for the Sisna Park, Illinois Fire Department. And Nick will be pinned by his mother Sue, and he's also accompanied by his sister Ellie and his stepfather Don. Thank you. Next, Engineer Peyton Kaiser. Peyton is in his sixth year with us, and one interesting thing about Peyton is that he has now four times led a 3,400-mile bike ride across America from LA to Boston for groups that want to just raise money for charity, or for people who just have it as a goal, as a personal accomplishment. So, tonight Peyton Kaiser is being promoted to engineer.
I, Peyton Kaiser.
I, Peyton Kaiser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
So tonight Peyton is accompanied by his grandmother Carol, and he will be pinned by his mother Missy. As he's being pinned, I want to share Peyton's great-great-grandfather also served as a firefighter for the University of Illinois Fire Department, when it existed, and his grandfather was also a firefighter for the Urbana Fire Department. So Peyton is coming into us as a long line of firefighters, so thank you Peyton. Next up, Lieutenant Josh Ingold. Lieutenant Josh Ingold is in his 11th year with the Urbana Fire Department. He was promoted in October and has already become an excellent leader on our department. He's also a military veteran with the Army National Guard, so.
I, Josh Ingold.
I, Josh Ingold.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of lieutenant.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of lieutenant.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the residents of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the residents of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed.
Congratulations and thank you.
Tonight Josh is accompanied by his wife Jen and his kids Brady and Hadley. He will be pinned tonight by his wife Jen. As we're waiting, Josh has also been a mention of a member of the pension board for several years. He's a hazmat tech member, and he's also part of our training committee. So thank you Josh. Last, but certainly not least, is Deputy Chief Steve Doggett. Steve Doggett has been with us now for 26 years. Well, he's been with us for 19. He's in his 26th year of fire service. He's been on the executive board for the last 15 years. He's been a, he was a seven years, he was a union president. He's also, for the past four years, was the director of the State Fire Academy at Illinois Fire Service Institute, where all of the, majority of the firefighters in the state of Illinois come to train. So with that, Steve, take his oath.
I, Steve Doggett.
I, Steve Doggett.
Do solemnly swear that I will-
Oh, sorry.
I change it up each time. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of deputy chief.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of deputy chief.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charters and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the residents of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Tonight Steve has been accompanied by his wife Shanna, his daughters Alex, Molly, and Maddie, his mother Denise, and his stepfather Larry. Tonight, he'll be pinned by his wife Shanna. Steve also has a master's degree in public administration that he earned from the U of I Springfield campus.
And I do want to remind everyone promoted tonight, you'll need to sign your oaths, and I'll give them to Chief Dade to have you do them out in the lobby. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council? I would ask if folks can step out into the lobby so we can go ahead with the meeting. Thanks. So if anyone wants to address the council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have five, up to five minutes to speak.
Good evening, City Council. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all those who were promoted this year. I, my name is Ben Jocelyn. I'm a resident here in Urbana. My sister doesn't live here, but she recently joined a fire force in, in Washington and just completed her EMS training, so I wish the best and safety to those who are taking care of us here, as I have a personal connection to the folks who are now doing that kind of work, so fun to see everybody getting promoted. Next, I want to say that I really appreciate the work that the council's doing regarding this measure going forward to try and make sure that we have citizen eyes on whatever technology is being made available to our police department. I think that's really important. I think that it was patently disingenuous that they came forward and said, "This is all we have for monitoring the city," and brought out a, like, kit of spy tools from their grandparents' attic, or whatever it was, that had monocles from Vietnam and stuff. And then when asked what they really use, like, they use the stuff that's in their cars, they use computers, they use technology that's not what was in that box. That was a stunt that when you're trying to prove that you're honest and trustworthy, just doesn't pass muster. I think that it is also disingenuous that they, that the leadership of that department suggests that it's not being treated fairly or like it's being honest. I think that there's no other department that could get the sort of year-over-year raises faster than all the other departments, and still act like it's not being treated fairly. I think that you are, as a council, being more than fair, that you're being very supportive of the police department, and I think the fact that they continue to act like they're not being supported is a failure of leadership. And I think the fact that there's members leaving, yeah, I don't think that has to do with a lack of support from the council. I think that has to do with failures of leadership elsewhere. I hope that you go ahead and pass the, the measure that you're looking forward to. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Hi, sorry, my name is Brian Maxwell. I'm a resident of, uh-
Could you repeat your name, please?
Brian Maxwell, I'm a resident of Ward, uh, two, I think, over there on East Elm Street. Yeah, I wanted to come in and talk tonight about, yeah, the, the presentation that was made last week on Celebrite technology, and then the ordinance that's being presented. I really hope that the council adopts the ordinance. I think this is like a, this is a thing that other cities have done, it's something that Urbana needs as well, ordinance on, you know, transparency and police surveillance technology. And, you know, the presentation that was given last week on Celebrite technology, I think it's, you know, very, it was getting into the weeds a lot of like, the bureaucratic details of the use of that technology and the technical, like, day-to-day use of that technology, and doesn't, and kind of doesn't look at like, the bigger picture of what is going on globally and in this country with, in terms of like, surveillance and this technology. I mean, Celebrite is a Israeli spyware, digital spyware, that is, that was developed by a country who is currently being charged with genocide and whose leader is being charged with war crimes, developed on a captive Palestinian population, developed on what many human rights organizations consider the largest open-air prison in the world. This is a surveillance software that was essentially battle-tested on a captive population overseas, and is now being, is now being spread around the world, and the US serving as one of its largest customers in the world. The US being the largest, the country with the largest prison population on the planet, purchasing the surveillance software from a country that is operating the world's largest open-air prison. I think that's just like, a perspective that needs to be considered in all this. Celebrite has been, you know, called out by multiple human rights organizations for its use in human rights abuses. Just a couple examples. In Hong Kong, Chinese officials used this technology to hack into phones of pro-democracy demonstrators. The Committee to Protect Journalists, police in Botswana, used it to crack the phones of detained journalists. In Russia, authorities use this technology to hack opposition figures. And I know hearing these examples, the response, it seems like in the community has been some eye-rolling about like, "Okay, well, this just happens in overseas authoritarian regimes using this technology." Like, in this town right now, there are students and citizens, like, you know, people who live in this community who are being charged with felonies, with jail time, for protesting our government's federal policy, protesting our government's military involvement, supplying weapons to the country that developed this technology. That really makes Urbana kind of an outlier nationally, as far as, you know, most cities and universities who have, who initially went after protesters for the protests last summer, have either, you know, dismissed these charges or knocked them down to misdemeanors. Urbana is like, really an outlier, outlier in the country as far as, you know, charging, you know, essentially political dissidents in this country with, with, you know, felonies and jail time for protesting our government's foreign policy. So like, I think that that perspective really needs to be considered when we talk about this, you know, digital surveillance software, like, you know, just, the conversation the other night was basically just about the technical jargon and like, the day-to-day uses of it, but like, the bigger picture here is how it's being used, how our communities are being policed, especially when it comes to people exercising their First Amendment rights. Yeah, I would, I was going to share before this meeting, I'll share it after the meeting with the council, a really useful article just came out in Truth Out, but specifically how University of Illinois Police Department used license plate readers and digital investigation tools to go after students who were involved in those protests, find them and, and get their identity and serve them, so essentially they were served subpoenas months after the fact, after these protests took place. So this is like, really what's happening with using these digital surveillance technologies in our community, and I think that needs to be considered. I hope the ordinance is passed. I hope it's even expanded to include some stuff around First Amendment rights, if it hasn't yet. And, yeah, that's all I'll say. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Addison Gray. I'm a resident of Ward Two. Lifelong resident of Ward Two, essentially. I'm here about the same thing, sort of in support of an ordinance to increase oversight of the acquisition and use of surveillance technology, and specifically talk about like, how alarmed I am about this use of Celebrite. This is something that like, people didn't know was being used by our police department, and then we find out last week that this is something that's being used by our police department. It really, for me, raises serious concerns about transparency, about accountability, which shows why we need an ordinance like this, so that we know what kind of technology is being used on us. I don't personally know how I can think that, like, I can trust a system that employs these invasive surveillance tools without clear public knowledge or consent. Nearly a year ago now, we agreed to implement an alternative response task force, which is a community-focused initiative designed to redirect funds from oppressive policing toward more humane solutions. And like, at least as far as I've been able to follow, this project has kind of failed to get off the ground. And we're still allocating budget increases and raises to our police department. And we're still allocating budget increases and raises to our police department. We're still funding these surveillance technologies, but we're not doing what the community has been asking for, which is alternative response. And more specifically on Celebrite, again, it's an Israeli company. It's surveillance tools that were used to monitor Palestinian civilians. And it's now being used to monitor civilians here, is being used to monitor our students, our community members, to charge them with felony actions after the fact. Like, these people were not picked up the day of the encampment, right? They were, like, served notices to appear months afterward because of surveillance technologies. And these charges have been, like, widely denounced. The ACLU has put out statements about this, like, this is something that is seriously concerning and it's because of surveillance technologies have been used to repress First Amendment speech rights. And specifically back to it being an Israeli technology, in November, 70% of Cunningham Township voters, like, decisively said, "We do not want to be sending our tax dollars to Israel, to military aid to Israel." It was exactly 10,000 votes. And I think that sounds like a really clear message that we don't support the use of Israeli militarism and its attendant practices. I really find it hard to believe that those same 10,000 voters who voted against this would say, "Yeah, let's use Israeli technology to surveil our community and repress free speech." Beyond its origins, Celebrite is also ridiculed with vulnerabilities. Analysis by cybersecurity experts has exposed serious flaws in its systems, raising concerns about misuse, data breaches, unchecked government power. So these vulnerabilities itself, like, in the actual physical hardware, are a problem as well. But in the end, like, it comes down to who we want to be as a community, who we want to be as Urbana. I've always grown up here thinking that we are a community that values free speech, that values, like, I don't know, well, the well-being of its citizens. And to know that we are using this technology that's used to suppress dissent, to monitor private lives and to fortify systems of state violence is really alarming to me. I would like to see the council stand with the majority of its residents, give us that transparency that we're asking for, divest from Israeli systems of state violence. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barry Zhang. I'm a resident of Champaign and a student at UIUC. I'm speaking to you today because I'm concerned about the city's investment in Celebrite, particularly their universal forensic extraction device and all of the other technology used to surveil the population. I'm in support of an ordinance to increase transparency and oversight regarding the technologies and surveillance used by the city police on our community. This investment of $16,000 is extremely harmful to the entire community of Urbana. Given that there are many Muslim and Arab people in the community and that Celebrite has historically targeted those communities as well as other communities of color, its investment will only increase surveillance policing and violence among those communities and cause more harm. In addition, the council has previously voted on a resolution to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. And like Addison mentioned, a large majority of Cunningham Township citizens voted yes to divestment from Israel. In a momentous occasion that demanded, that demonstrated care for the Palestinians in this community. Now, given Celebrite's involvement and collaboration with the Israeli military, this respect and care feels hollow. As leaders of the city, you have a responsibility to your community members, including your Palestinian ones. And that means being transparent about the technologies you supply our police force with. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vera. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm gonna pull this out. Okay. I'm just gonna go ahead and read some of the article that was mentioned before. This is by Brian Dolinar. And I'm gonna skip to the end here where it's about, it's about our community. Okay, so Israeli tech on campus. One of the nation's largest public universities, the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, has taken a particularly aggressive approach to targeting activists. It's currently pursuing felony mob action charges against encampment demonstrators using evidence from license plate readers and monitoring social media posts. UIUC is a test case for the militarization of campus police. The University of Illinois Police Department has a total budget in the fiscal year of 2022-23 of $13.5 million. There are currently 2,300 cameras installed throughout campus. The university recently won a federal grant of nearly $1 million to establish a real-time crime center that will allow police to monitor surveillance cameras, search databases, and use license plate readers. Information obtained from the public records requests reveal the capabilities of IUPD's surveillance. In one instance, a detective with the IUPD sent photos of a student protester to the Illinois State Police Statewide Terrorism and Intelligence Center, a Fusion Center opened on May 14, 2003. Photos from IUPD were run through facial recognition software possessed by the Fusion Center to successfully identify the student leading to their prosecution. Campus and community activists have found that since at least 2021, the University of Illinois Board of Trustees has contacted, contracted with Celebrite, the Israeli-based company that sells surveillance technology and is known for being the phone hacking software of choice for the FBI. The board most recently renewed its contract with the tech firm in November 2024 for use of digital collector and inspector subscriptions. The former is advertised as, quote, "A must-have tool in the digital forensic toolbox for investigators," unquote, while the latter is marketed to find internet history, downloads, locations, recent searches, and more. The board has spent at least $17,000 on such technology, according to information obtained from the Illinois Freedom of Information Act requests. UIUC's contract renewal comes after more than a year of Palestinian ethnic cleansing by Israel and underscores the university's administration's commitment to Israeli interests in direct opposition to the concerns of student, alumni, faculty, and community activists. Students have been trying to pass boycott divestment sanctions referenda at UIUC since at least 2020, to no avail. Laura Knutson, a concerned alumni who recently spoke out in favor of divestment at the quarterly board meeting, feels like this contract renewal is a slap in the face to student activists for, after everything that has gone on over the last year. She told Truth Out that even though students have been asking their university to listen, they just continue to be ignored. The university is now a repeat customer of a company that has been accused of facilitating human rights abuses by activists for years, including by Amnesty International. Celebrite has academic institutions like UIUC to thank for an excellent 2024 in which Celebrite exceeded their original revenue and other financial targets, according to interim CEO Hogan. The New York Times reported that Celebrite has sold about $54 million in investigative tools to ICE, which can now be used to power Trump, Trump's current immigration crackdown. Partnering with Celebrite is one weapon in UIUC's arsenal to stifle student speech on campus, a pattern of behavior that caused the ACLU of Illinois to issue a scathing letter on January 14, 2025, directly to university administrators. The letter stated, among other things, that UIUC needed to exercise greater restraint in enforcing policies restricting student activism. When asked to comment, UIUC Executive Communications and Issue Management Director claimed that police, quote, "Do not use Celebrite technology for surveillance and only use the program for cellular device extraction and analysis with consent of a warrant." He also asserted that the university remains committed to creating an environment that fosters free speech. Truth Out reached out to Celebrite, but they failed to respond to comment. Sana Sabula, a member of the Champaign-Urbana Muslim Action Committee and a PhD candidate at UIUC, helped expose this Celebrite connection. As she told Truth Out, "The FBI and ICE have paid millions of dollars to Celebrite, which is run by former IDF members. And now these military tools are in the hands of corrupt regimes, ICE and our campus police. It is unacceptable." I'll just, I'll stop there for time, but I hope that you vote yes on the upcoming ordinance. And I very much oppose the use of Celebrite in Urbana. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? I don't believe we have any written input. All right, we'll move on to council input and communications.
Sorry, there is, there is a written, there's an email that was sent in.
Councilmember Colasetti, is that the email from Leopold? Because it did not request to be read into the record, but we are aware of it and it will be incorporated into the minutes. But it, I did not see a request to be read. Did I miss it?
No, I think you're correct. I don't see that. I think previously she's indicated a request, but yeah, that's, thank you for making sure it's included.
Thank you.
Okay. Council input and communications. Grace.
Thank you. I'd just say a quick congratulations again to all of our fire departments, those who were promoted. And thank you to members of the public who came out tonight, gave your input and watching the meeting. So, thank you all.
James.
Yes, congratulations to all our firefighters. I did want to remind everyone that there is a municipal election tomorrow. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and, or 6:00 a.m. and closes at 7:00 p.m. The city clerks, or the county clerk site has information on polling places. I believe there are 12 open in the city of Urbana. Good news is, Champaign County now has vote centers. So as long as you know where a polling place is, you can go there and vote. You don't have to go to a specific one. Although I know a lot of people like to visit their, their staff at the polling place that they typically go to. But we do need as many people as are able and are eligible to vote, to come out and vote. It is your opportunity to have a say in what happens locally. Thanks.
Chandra.
Yes, many congratulations to our firefighters who, who got promoted today. It's always great to see that in chambers. And to that end, I also want to, to say that I do believe in supporting our local police officers who work tirelessly to keep our community safe, and I recognize the vital role they play in Urbana. Their service deserves appreciation, and I stand by those who work to protect and serve our residents with integrity. At the same time, it's also my responsibility to stand with the majority of the community, ensuring that our policies reflect the values, concerns, and priorities of the people I represent. It's also worth noting that many of the same voices heavily focused on Celebrite were absent when our community experienced three violent deaths in a single weekend. Public safety and community trust must go hand in hand, and I'm committed to fostering both in Urbana, ensuring that we prioritize real solutions to challenge our, real solutions to the challenges our city faces.
Any other comments? Sharice.
Um, I just wanted to also kind of piggyback on what James said. I always felt happy about the, the firefighters and their performance and everything that they do because they helped me a lot, to be honest. And I want to remind people that they need to vote. Voting is one of the most important, especially within my community, one of the most important actions that you can partake in to have your voice heard or not. So I thank everyone that, that votes, and I want you to get out there and vote in huge numbers so that we can be sure that we are doing the city's business.
Any else wish to comment?
I did want to address a misunderstanding that I heard during public comment. The Alternative Response Task Force effort is not stalled or dead. We currently have an, our request for proposals out to get a new facilitator. A decision was made last fall to seek a new facilitator for the task force. So that period ends in probably a couple of weeks. We'll see if we have any proposals. But the, the effort to, and the potential alternative task force members remain committed. So that is not going away, and we remain committed to that process.
All right, reports of standing committees.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sure. I'm sorry, Mary, Jay.
Yeah, so thank you. Also would like to congratulate our firefighters and appreciate all of our first responders who responded to the violence in our community in recent days and weeks, weeks rather. I also want to stress that I'm glad to say that the city is moving forward with further discussions around how we can best address violence in our community. But I also want to state that I've been very concerned about some of the initial conversations about domestic violence coming from, from the city and want to make sure that we're providing accurate information about best practices that are data-driven and evidence-based. So I look forward to having more for the city to offer in terms of what that could look like going forward. And I also wanted to thank our presenters from last week, when I was not able to be there, including the Advocating for Aging Care Group. I myself had a loved one who we weren't able to find a skilled nursing facility for, who ended up spending the last part of her life outside of our community because of the inadequate beds in our community. So I'm very grateful for the efforts that are happening to, to make sure that more, more residents of Urbana don't have to face that same challenge of having a loved one so far away. So I think that's it, other than just to reinforce, again, yes, voting is so important right now. And I think the transparency and civic engagement at the local level is critical right now, especially because there is so much going on at the federal level. And making sure that Urbana continues to stick to its values and support all of its residents is of the utmost importance. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Alice.
I've had a request to take everything off of the consent agenda, so I'm gonna move forward with the first one. And just as background, the request was to, there were some follow-up questions that people had. So I'm gonna move for approval of Resolution Number 2025-02016R, a resolution approving a redevelopment agreement with MCDJ LLC, which is CU Adventures in Time and Space Expansion at 302 North Broadway Avenue.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Discussion. Grace.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify and follow up on some things that were brought up last week about the termination mechanism. And I appreciate, thank you, Matt, our city attorney, for the email. I'd try and summarize for the public and feel free to jump in or follow up if I don't capture something accurately. But in summary, it seems that, you know, opening up the whole terms of the agreement is kind of opening a whole nother can of worms that wouldn't quite be appropriate in the process on the council floor. And that it's not the typical mechanism. We keep it as the city for termination. I think maybe those were the main ones that stood out to me. And so I am supportive of these, and I definitely plan to vote yes, and I appreciate the initiatives for the community and bringing businesses here. I think that this is, seems to me exactly what we need to be doing with some of the TIF money that we've been accumulating and making sure that it's invested back into the tax bases and into our downtown and into Cunningham TIF, especially before it ends. So I'm in support of this, and I hope that whoever the next mayor may be will have understanding about extensions of this agreement if they're needed. So I'll say that to our applicants as well. I hope that that's the idea in the future. If construction takes an extra few months and you can't hit your targets, that I hope that the mayor at the time will work with you to present some extensions to those agreements. And in my mind, that's the way that it would work, just as it has with any of our TIF, especially central TIF redevelopment projects in the past. So again, I'm in support, won't hold it up for this thing, but I hope that it plays out in a way that was intended and gives you enough understanding as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2025-020- I move approval of Resolution Number 2025-02017R, resolution approving a redevelopment agreement with Race Street Ventures LLC, Fernies High Horse at 118120 South Race Street.
Second. Second.
I have to go home.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Will.
Thank you. There were a couple...
Turn your mic on, please.
Closer. There were a couple of questions at the meeting last week. So, this week, we have some folks from Fernies here to answer any questions that council may have.
Hello.
Could you introduce yourselves, please?
Yes, my name is Seth Fine, and I'm a resident of Champaign, regrettable.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Singer, resident of Champaign, but do a lot of business here in Urbana.
And your role with the... What's your role with the development?
I'm the managing partner, one of the managing partners, and the project manager.
Same. I'm also a partner.
Okay.
James.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for being here tonight. I did have a chance, full disclosure, I did have a chance to talk to Seth and ask some of my questions. But I want to ask them again, because I asked them last week, and maybe the public is wondering what the answer to those questions are. So, my first question was, the proposal indicates that there might be other food trucks involved. Could you describe a little bit about what your food service looks like and what additional food trucks would look like?
Sure thing. But I want to start just by saying, like, it's a real honor to be up here and talk about these things, because as somebody who was born in Urbana, this is the type of stuff that I get really excited about. So, I'm grateful for it. So, thank you for considering it. So, with regards to the food trucks, we have every intention of placing a food trailer in the, what is now a back parking lot of the two buildings. That parking lot will be converted to patio space and then theoretically play nicely with the city park that is on the south side of the buildings. So, that's where that food trailer will be. It's a beautiful chrome airstream trailer with a full kitchen, despite the fact that we don't have intentions of opening a restaurant, per se. As far as the other food trucks, you know, it's... Buildings are kind of uniquely situated in that there is an alley, and I think it's Crane, but I'm not sure if it ever, because it jigged, I don't know. But, you know, it's... There's an alley that intersects the city garage and our property. And so, you know, all that alley does right now is service trash and recycling. In the event that we have the type of programming that would necessitate more than one food truck, it'd be pretty cool to invite other trucks. I don't think that we see it as an opportunity to just, like, jam it full of food trucks and kind of do that type of work. But it's very much about, like, specific to the programming of the night. So, that's, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thank you. And then my other question was, the model that the plan talks about is a location that would have 150 events a year. And I'm curious about what your vision is for where those events come from in the current climate. How do you see that unfolding as compared to the kind of events we have now at other venues in downtown Urbana?
Sure, I can take this one. Also, I want to say thanks for, you know, all the support from everybody here. And, you know, thanks to Carol and Will for working through this with us, Tyra and Mike working through this with us tirelessly, talking through what our plan was and, you know, really all of the nuances of it. Because I think, you know, I speak for Seth and our partnership to say, we believe we're building something fairly unique here. And, you know, my history and Seth's history as programmers all over Champaign-Urbana for many years now. You know, this particular number was assigned by the city inside of the agreement based on us coming up with some economic impact numbers that we felt were viable based on our experience with selling tickets and doing lots of styles of programming through many years of working here in Urbana. And, you know, our plan is to do just that, is to deliver and work on the pieces of programming that we're used to doing, whether it's live music or comedians, live podcasts, author readings, film screenings, things like that. And based on that, we had kind of determined that, yes, this was inside of the parameters of what we felt was viable for our company and our operation to be able to do inside of, you know, which is, what we're doing is building a very modular space. We want it to be a very welcoming space for a lot of different styles of program. We're not just a live music venue. And so, we want to put our best foot forward to, you know, showcase to the city and all of the patrons who we hope that will, you know, patronize our establishment, is that, hey, we are, have a full breadth of programming, 150, you know, pieces of programming per year might seem like a lot, and we're going to, you know, definitely be earning our keep here in downtown. And because of that, you know, our experience throughout our career doing Pygmalion, lots of programming through our previous endeavors with the Accord in downtown Champaign, lots of talent-buying opportunities that we've had through working through Mike and Molly's back in the day, Seth's experience being a talent buyer and, you know, working at the Canopy Club for a long time. And so, our efforts combined really feel like we are well-suited to take our relationships that we have developed through the course of several decades inside of our own space. And so, we feel like we're well-poised to be able to do that and bring a wide variety of programming to downtown Urbana that doesn't necessarily exist in the current state. And not just that, very well complement what is already around with our neighbors. And so, we feel as though doing that will present a new texture to downtown Urbana. And we feel, you know, honestly, very privileged to be sitting here, having this conversation, being in a position to take what we've learned over the course of many years and not just having fun with it, but building a piece of the community that we feel like can be built on.
If I could follow up, you mentioned the modularness of the space. Could you talk a little bit about what that means? And also, you mentioned to me, when we met earlier, the hours that you plan to be open. Could you include that?
Sure, I'll comment on the modular component of this. I think, given the style of space that we're working inside, you know, we get excited by the idea that there are a lot of possibilities. And we might be dreamers inside of this, but, you know, we feel like being loose and having the ability to do a lot of different styles of thing, whether it's a live music concert that, you know, is a standing-room-only, general-admission situation, or a seated event that demands a space for 80 to 100 people to sit and watch a film or something like that. Or not just that, you know, being a space where people will know that it is consistently open seven days a week. Mentioned hours, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., because it's a coffee house and a, you know, a space for people to come enjoy food, you know, after work, you know, offerings with the style of food that we're going to be presenting. And so, you know, given that sort of style of, you know, space we have, we feel like it's in our best interest to maintain flexibility within the structure of what we're doing. Because, yes, it's an expensive project to do, and we have a lot of ideas. But we feel as though maintaining that flexibility is going to benefit our operation, because it gives us some more opportunity. But also, being able to be a reliable place that people can count on being open seven days a week and have those things so people can, you know... A lot of people are creatures of habit, and so, they want to know that their space is open, even if there's a show happening. It's designed in a particular way to bode well in those situations. I don't know, Seth, do you have anything to add to that about the hours?
Oh, yeah, I mean, just to piggyback on that, it's like, kind of hard to describe outside of saying, we're building a theater. I mean, it's really what it is. It's a theater. When you walk inside, you'll understand, because it will have a presidium. It's a small theater, but it's a theater nonetheless. And, you know, our intentions are to do concerts. You know, I lectured about this at the University of Illinois, and just after 30 years of doing this work, when it was in high school, there's distinct differences between concerts, shows, and gigs. They're really different. They behave differently, and they mean different things to different people at different times. None of them better than the other. But our intentions are to put on concerts, and that is ticketed shows booked by agents from artists that are coming from outside of this community to perform, you know... And so, that doesn't mean we won't have local bands. Of course, we're going to, you know. Doesn't mean that we're not going to, you know, assign one thing, but that is our most intention. So, when you ask the question about, like, well, where are these shows going to come from? They're going to come from everywhere. They're going to come from touring artists, primarily comedians, musicians, whatever it is that we want to do. And so, yeah, those hours are really important to us. Now, look, can't predict the future. But I think that one of the things that we know about Urbana right now is that it's like, it's like on the cusp of being just like, so, that much more full and vibrant. You see the work happening, and, you know, in so many ways, it's been an amalgamation of a lot of hard work by a lot of different people. And, you know, this building is on the neighborhood of, you know, the Urbana part of campus. We want to be a place that people can depend on to get coffee in the morning and get a good bagel. But then we also want to be a place where you can go late night and get a drink, you know, talk about what's going on. Whether we have shows or not, we want to be consistent in that way so that people rely on us as a place to go morning, noon, and night. So, I hope that's helpful in describing what we really have in mind.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to answer some questions tonight. And I'm seeing, too, that the dispersment, all starting after the issuance of the building permit, which I'm assuming is when you're about ready to open at the end of that process. I was wondering if you had a guess when that would be, when you'd be opening to start for business?
We...
2026.
We hope next spring.
Spring.
Due to... So, a part of this, layer of this was, we had been awarded a tourism grant from the state of Illinois. And in order to work through that, there are a variety of benchmarks and pieces that we have to basically clear with the Illinois Department of Natural History. And so, because these are historic buildings, while they are not historic landmarks themselves, they are inside of the Historic District of downtown Urbana. And of course, given that we would like to receive this funding that we have been awarded, you know, we need to go to the lengths to make sure that we're working through all of that. And so, you know, we've experienced some setbacks in the sense that we are working through a timeline, but we actually currently do have our building permit. It was, we've already paid for it. We have an active building permit already. And so, there are going to be some updates due to that, due to that, these revisions in our plans through the architectural plans and our structural plans that need to basically be resubmitted to the city to update our building permit. And so, yes, we have our building permit already, and this will kind of activate once we come to, you know, the vote and everything. And so, I think that, given that sort of thing, we're shooting for next spring. That's been our intention all along. We are basically ready to go. We've been doing some work inside of that already with the cellar space. And so, we're poised and ready to go with our contractors and all that good stuff. So, you know, this is why we're here to kind of, this is one piece of that larger puzzle.
Thank you. And then, follow-up question maybe for the city, and just trying to understand how it works with the distribution, because it's all based on the issuance of the city building permit. And saying that's already happened.
Yeah, and I don't know, I wasn't aware that you had the permits finalized. I was kind of, I know there had been some revisions. So, once the agreement's approved and a permit's been issued, then...
I can't hear you, Will.
I'm sorry. Once the agreement's approved and then the permit has been issued, so once both those have been satisfied, that would be the two conditions for the first payment.
Okay, so, starting soon-ish, our first payment, and then four years after, whatever we call that... Oh, that's the certificate of occupancy will be the next payment. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sharice.
Sorry I couldn't see you guys last week when you were giving your information.
They weren't here last week.
Oh, well, it was sometime we were talking about it, though. Talking about it. But anyway, I, what, I'm trying to visualize. I'm a visual learner. Trying to visualize, it's going to be across the street from the hotel?
Yes, the buildings are, yeah, kitty corner from the library and across the street, across Elm Street from the hotel.
Okay. The iron post.
Mm-hmm.
Where is the airstream going to go?
So, the way the buildings are situated is there are two buildings side by side, and in the back part of the property currently exists a six-space, two-car-deep parking lot. That is where the airstream trailer will be parked, which is on the north side of 118 South Race. Up against the wall, which is essentially, what is Thresno Polis? That building. So, it will be tucked into there.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Kind of figure it out. And that, how many people do you anticipate being able to fit in that area?
Inside and outside, you know, we won't get occupancy until we have more, but it's an estimated 250 people, so...
Okay. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to be able to see that. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor made by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Abstention.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance Number 2025-02005, an ordinance approving a special-use permit at 809 West Green Street, Plan Case 2496 SU24 for Dutch Burrows Coffee.
They're second.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Discussion. Grace.
I see, oh, there's Kevin. I saw your email with the proposed language that we talked about from last week. I was trying to skim, is it already in here? It doesn't look like it. We need to add that?
No, it's in the ordinance. It's condition number seven.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. So, this is already updated from last week. So, I guess then...
Yes.
Just flag that reminder to the public that we... I like your language. We could just clarify that you propose that the developer will work with city planning and engineering staff to implement measures at the driveway that are, yes, designed to prioritize the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. So, I think that addresses some of our concerns from last week, and thank you.
Any other comments or questions? The clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. This may be an historic moment. At this point, we have seven new or expanded businesses in the city of Urbana and several more in the pipeline in the last two months. So thank you all for your support of these. And the, well, anyway, we'll move on to the regular agenda. There is nothing on the regular agenda, no reports of special committees, reports of officers. Carol.
I just wanted to give the council a heads up that in about a month, we expect that the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan will make its way from Plan Commission to the council. And we'll be sending out a doodle poll because we'd like to have a couple of meetings that are just dedicated to Imagine Urbana. And, and we're inviting the Plan Commission to sort of stay involved in the conversation and attend those meetings. But, so I think the first date we're going to poll is in late March. And then we'll have a couple of, of opportunities if, if we can get a quorum and people are interested in having those sort of dedicated meetings because we think there's going to be a lot of interest and a lot of discussion around it because it's a very, you know, there's a lot of content in the comprehensive plan. So just wanted to let you know that you'll be receiving an email with a doodle poll in it for that purpose.
Any other staff announcements? I just wanted to let folks know. Will, did you have one?
Yes, one quick one. The RFP for the Alternative Response Task Force, we extended the deadline for that one. So we got just up to when it was about to close and we hadn't received any proposals and some of the metrics that we can track with our software, it didn't look like we were going to receive any. So we extended the deadline. And I have a few tricks up my sleeve that I'll try to do to see if we can get a little bit more traction. Trying to get some more emails and getting some more notifications out there through our software. So we'll try a couple of things to see if we can get a little bit more exposure on it, but we extended the deadline for that for, for about a month.
I just wanted to let folks know that the city on Friday received a notification from the Census Bureau and we're given the results of our partial special census. The results of the census result, resulted in using too many results here. We have an additional, nearly 2,500 was added to our population count. So that'll put our new official population at 40,795. I wanted to thank staff members Will Kolchowski, Tarek Azim, former council member Bill Brown, who worked very, very diligently with the Regional Planning Commission staff to initially select the blocks to count, develop the maps, put the application into the Census Bureau, and shepherd it through the whole process. Bridgette Broihann was, worked tirelessly to promote the census in the neighborhoods where they were counted. And I also want to thank in particular all the residents who responded to the census. So what this means for the city, number one, is an increased funding for population-based distributions from the state of Illinois. So for example, that's our share of the local motor, of the motorfield tax for transportation projects and our share of the state income tax, which goes to the general fund. And given the uncertainty at the federal level, this type of funding is incredibly important. Estimates are it's another, about another $600,000 a year for the state sources of funding. We'll get the final bill from the Census Bureau within three months. We hope it won't be higher than what we already paid, which is about $391,000. Hopefully, we'll get a little bit refunded, but anyway, we'll get the final accounting. This, this extra funding will be going forward. Unfortunately, it's not retroactive, but we're very pleased with the results. And we just thank everyone who contributed to the success of this count. It was an enormous undertaking. Thank you. Carol.
I just wanted to add a little, a little bit to what the mayor just said, which it would, what I would like to add is that we're now at about 40,800. What was modeled in the financial forecast was 41,000. So we're coming, so it's not extra money relative to what the financial forecast was. It is affirming the financial forecast as it relates to population. Just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you for clarifying. If you remember, in the financial forecast, we had the worst-case scenario, likely, and best case. So that was the likely scenario. So kudos to our finance department for being pretty spot-on on that prediction. James.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor, and council for investing in the special census because it was clear that there were errors made partially due to the pandemic, but the impact on campus with some significant projects going on. I do want to, you know, point out that this was done very strategically. The special census was done very strategically to look at tracks that would likely yield the most because it's expensive to do the census. So if we had had an opportunity to reset and do the census right, it's certainly likely that the population of Urbana would be closer to 42,000 or maybe even more if we were able to count the whole thing. So it is, you know, some comments have been made about the growth of Urbana over the last 20, 30, 40 years. The, the city has been growing. It's grown 25% since 1970. And it's important to know that those numbers were just wrong. And we needed to fix them because we needed to fix the funding that is due to the people in our community.
And believe it or not, the next census is in five years and it'll be here before you know it. So that will be the real reset. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion item, which is related to the police surveillance technology proposed ordinance. And we put this discussion item on the agenda because after, after receiving the fourth version of the ordinance last week and after the staff began going through the ordinance to provide feedback, it, it was, it was clear to us that, first of all, we hadn't gotten direct or direction from the city council as far as the scope of the ordinance. Last week, language was added to that version that expanded from policing surveillance technology to all city departments. And we really wanted to get a clear understanding of what the intention of the council is before we ask the rest of the department heads to review and do the same sort of things that we've asked our police department to do. So I'm, we're seeking feedback from council as far as the intent of this, of that. James.
Yes, thank you. I, I can tell you that I had been thinking about this in terms of surveillance technology used in law enforcement. I had not been thinking about this in terms of all city departments. I can understand why any surveillance technology would be of concern to people, but I certainly haven't been thinking about it in those terms. And so in a similar fashion to how we have discussed the distinction between policing technology and surveillance technology that might be used by the police, I feel like there's a discussion to be had about what's the intent of this expansion of what we were talking about to this, this much more broader scope? What, what are the, what are the challenges or concerns we're hoping to address by doing that? I myself don't know the answer to those questions because, like I said, I was thinking in terms of where we had been focusing the, the conversation the previous meeting. So I'm looking forward to further explanation there. Thanks.
Mary Alice.
Yeah, I, I agree with James. I think initially the conversation was about public safety, not including the fire department, for example. And I'm not as concerned with surveillance technology, but rather the database and what that means for all the other city units. Databases, we have a lot of different databases in which we track information beyond the police department. And so I think that that really is the kind of explosion, so to speak, of, of how this would be covered. But my intent at the beginning of talking about this was with police surveillance.
Grace.
Thanks for the question. I definitely appreciate some of the input here. I think some of the thought process that Matt, Rushley, and I were talking about in making some of these changes was first the request from policing technology to surveillance technology, which I think maybe I missed that the proposal was policing surveillance technology. I thought that was the original recommendation, was to change policing technology to surveillance technology.
That's correct.
So that's, that's the wording that's in there currently. I think that when it comes down to a practical matter, it's the same definitions. So I think that the same technologies apply regardless. And for me, I think it makes sense that whatever department using any of those technologies would still be relevant. We're still talking about the same things. It would likely be the police department, but there's also some future uncertainties. There may be some new departments that aren't even in existence now. Maybe the alternative response program is, wants to use some surveillance thing for something. Maybe there's a community engagement thing that branches off from our traditional police department at this time. I think that they're just unknown uncertainties and I think it makes sense to just apply to all surveillance technology. I don't see why it would be limited in that way. And then as far as databases, I think are also defined in here as, you know, the information generated from these surveillance technologies. And I think one of the recommendations from last week was to include surveillance technology and related databases. Was that right, Mary Alice, by head nod? Or if you want to, if it's not a simple answer, you-
No, I, I had missed that you were talking about databases generated with surveillance technology. If that is the intent, that's not how I originally read that ordinance. But I would be fine with that intent.
Yeah, and if I may just clarify, so the definitions that have been here now are the ones swiped largely from Boston's ordinance. These are, have been, there was one version of definitions and then this is the second version that's been proposed for the past maybe couple of months now. And that definition of surveillance data reads, "Any technology data collected, captured, recorded, retained, processed, intercepted, or analyzed by surveillance technology acquired by the city or operated at the direction of the city." And then there's the definition of surveillance technology and we've got those list of examples and things that aren't relevant. And so here, surveillance data is defined as any data generated from that technology.
Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Whoops. So my recollection of the last reading of that and because we had a question from the public, body cameras and the cameras in the squad cars are not included. Those are explicitly excluded in the ordinance. I just, can you confirm that?
Might also look to Matt a little bit. This was one on our to-do list that we were going to talk some more this week and was kind of on the radar. So it does say one of the exemptions, partially, I think it might not say everything we want it to. But I think, yeah, four and five of B under definitions of surveillance technology, what is not included, talks about cameras installed on or in a police vehicle, cameras installed pursuant to state law authorization in or on a vehicle or along a public right-of-way for traffic, blah, blah, blah. I think that one doesn't quite capture everything we wanted it to. But I think that is an important point, that there are some of things, things that might be mandated or regulated by state law. And so I was also wondering if, Matt, if you had, had a chance to think of any proposed language at this point?
I don't have any specific proposed language, but I would note body cams are, are an exception in a number of the other communities' ordinances that have adopted something similar. It doesn't appear that in this particular draft that they're, they're mentioned specifically, but they'd need, they would need to be exempt just based upon state law. And so it, it would be easy enough to capture that with, with enmity here.
They're clarifying statements. Mary Alice.
I just had a question based on your earlier conversations with staff. Do you have any ideas in terms of surveillance technology used by units outside of the police department? Based on just early conversations, I think it would help this conversation.
We're, we're starting to, I, I, I sent out a copy of the ordinance to everyone and we, we're starting to get some feedback. We, I wouldn't say we have conclusive feedback, but there are some tools that, I can give you a couple of examples of tools, okay? So one tool is called Placer AI. And it's used in economic development. It's commonly used in economic development. We have it. And what it does is, I don't know exactly how it works, but based on people's cell phones, it can say, somebody who went to Meyer also went to this place or that place. It could say, for instance, when we, you know, when we, if we want to examine one of the venues, you know, when fernies gets going, where are the people coming from that, that, that frequent fernies? You know, what zip codes or whatever? That's all based on cellphone data that we don't have the individual data, but it, but that's what, what it's generated from is, is a company collects that and makes that available to their customers. Another one is when we do, either we or an applicant at our direction does a traffic impact analysis. And part of what they have to do is determine in a given set of intersections or whatever, in, you know, usually it's peak hour, how much traffic is going through the intersection and which, which direction are people turning? And so there's, there's cameras that they use to actually observe vehicles doing all of the, all of these motions and then they count them. So I don't know the full capacity of that sort of, of tool. We know, we know what we do with it. So I think one of the things that we're trying to explore and understand better is it's a combination. It seems like there's a, well, and, and there's, as, as we flesh this out even further, it's the tool itself and then it's how the tool itself is used. And once we start to unpack even further what the mayor was going to explore, which is even if you were just thinking about the police, there are tools that are used in, in surveillance that is used for investigating a crime. Like we're, you know, I'm not, I'm not the best person to describe this, but you, you have a very specific purpose for wanting to watch a, a location, an individual, whatever, versus we're just watching to see what happens and who, you know, on a random basis, we're, we're just, you know, it's a, it's a wide net. So exploring the distinction or the, or what is trying to be addressed is a combination of the tool and the use of the tool. So, and, and that's what, we don't see a lot of, we, we don't see a lot of parsing of that in some of these ordinances, but it's very important to us because, you know, this, this is an opportunity for transparency, but the more complex it becomes, people have different sets of expectations. I mean, we have pondered over the list of, well, surveillance is this and it's not that. And it, so you have to spend a lot of time kind of toggling back and forth to go, does any given thing actually fit the definition? So that's what we're struggling with. So that's what we're trying to understand. What does the council as a whole, what are you trying to address? To help guide us in responding.
Mary Alice.
So, so one thing, you know, it's interesting because I was thinking about when we're doing that pilot on Lincoln, on North Lincoln, and one of the questions we had was how would we be able to define success? And I know John had talked about using cellphone data to see where people are going, if they're going off of Lincoln. And, and so I guess one of my questions, and this is kind of to council here, I think one of the biggest concerns with surveillance is the personal identification, personal information that's being collected that can be tracked back to a specific individual. And that's my understanding of, of the concern, right? That the, the community should know what we're doing with the data of person X. And in that case, there are companies, as you, as you gave an example about, there are companies who track this cellphone data. We don't necessarily have what phone number it is. We don't have what license plate it is. We don't have what vehicle it is, right? We just have this point in time that a vehicle traveled from Schnucks to Courier Cafe. I get, and so because that's not personally identifying information, I, I do think that's a really big question that we need to address. Are we concerned with personally identifying information, PII information? Or are we concerned about anything? And I think that does open up a big can of worms. I would be more concerned, I think the emphasis should be on that personal identification. That, that to me is the biggest concern. So I'll throw that out there for everybody to discuss.
Shandra.
I would agree. If it's information that's, can identify a specific person at a specific place, at a specific time, I think those, that's the information that we should know is being collected. Saying that, you know, a car, like you said, went from Schnucks to Courier Cafe at, you know, I don't think that that, that indicates a specific person, that we can tie that information back to a specific person. So I think that, you know, this audit should focus on- So I think that, you know, this ordinance should focus on surveillance or, or databases that collect information that could be tied to an individual.
Sharice.
I think my biggest concern is that I haven't heard enough from the department either about, maybe being a police officer, the police chief, Chief Boone, maybe you can tell us what is, how it's defined, surveillance is defined from the professional law enforcement perspective.
Thank you for the question. Surveillance, I, I think of surveillance as technology that does not require manpower. In other words, someone constantly driving it, operating it, it's self-operated, such as LPRs. There's something such as x-ray vans. There are biometric type surveillance technologies that can read the iris of one eye and identify that person. So, having said all that, currently, we have no technology that can randomly identify anyone particularly without a search warrant or them agreeing to provide this information. I'm going to go off script a little bit, I, I have no problem with a surveillance ordinance. I, I think my challenge is that we are couching this particular ordinance from a department that has high-level surveillance equipment. We're talking about a police department whose surveillance unit, their budget is more than our budget as a police department. I, I think if we started from a position of, police department wants this, it's going to require the approval and oversight of council as well as the community input. I think that's where we start incrementally. But, but trying to make this work the way we are currently structured, it's going to be difficult. And, and, and we won't get this done in weeks. Because Boston's ordinance, it's solid, but it's based on a very high-level operation of police surveillance, which we just don't have.
Grace.
Thank you, just wanted to touch on some of the comments or questions here. I think as far as definitions, I would encourage anyone to look at the current proposed definitions. I think the definitions lay out pretty clearly what is and is not defined as surveillance technology and what specific technologies that includes. The definition currently does state, "Any device, hardware, long list of blah, 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 blah" that's capable of being associated with any identifiable individual or group. So that's already in the definition of surveillance technology. There's already an exclusion, number five, that we were talking about on the definition of surveillance technology, B, what are not included. Number five is that cameras or other things installed pursuant to state law that solely record traffic violations or traffic patterns are exempt already in the definitions. I think that if there is something that we need to include, so that we need to tailor the language, that's fine. But it's also hard to do that when we don't know what the technologies are. So I think that these things kind of go hand in hand. We can tailor the definitions based on the specific technologies. But until we know exactly what those might be, it's kind of hard to go on those specific cases. So I encourage you to look at the definitions there. And then did also want to point out some things that I think would apply under the current definitions that haven't been discussed as much is social media monitoring softwares, which it seems like we do have and use in the police department. Based on the February 3rd memo that was published in the council packet, yes, there are multiple softwares that seem like they are used for monitoring social media and having predictive analytic capabilities that would be covered under this ordinance. If that's not the case, or if it is, either way, I think we need more information about that, those software. Especially if I'm being told back here that they don't exist and they don't apply, I think we need some more information on that. So again, I would encourage you to just look at the definitions that are already proposed.
I'm going to ask, Jaya, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, I think, I think things have been covered, but thank you.
Okay. James and then Carol.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and, and support how Mary Alice and Chandra talked about personally identifiable information. I do, I think that's what we're talking about when we're talking, when we, I feel like that's what we're talking about when we're talking about surveillance, which is a automated way to know what an individual is doing or where they're at. I do have concerns about some of the tools that, that don't seem quite to fit into that, the, these tracking tools that will anonymize individual visits. Like we, I think I've heard the, the Visitors Bureau talk about, you know, trying to figure out where places people go when they come to town. It's, it's an, it's a identified visit and multiple places that that identified person goes, but it doesn't, they've got a tag associated with them, it's not their driver's license number or their, or their cellphone number. But still, those kinds of things, when they're used in conjunction with, well, where do we think these people live? You know, where, where is their residence? When you start to expand those kinds of anonymized, seemingly anonymized tools into something that can, you know, identify other parts of people's identity, that's where it's not completely clear, you know, when you, when you cross the line. I do, I do have, I guess I do have a concern, I, I don't, I think we'll have to split the same hairs when we talk about use of social media from a standpoint of investigation versus a standpoint of surveillance. It's one thing to go look for things on social media related to an event or a known thing that's happened as a part of an investigation, as opposed to what I'll call intent monitoring of social media posts or other, other things that people willingly put in, I'll say print, but it's digital print, into what's now the public record, essentially, right? You put something on the internet and you put it in print and you, and you use words, it is committed out there, it can be looked at. I can look at stupid things I wrote in 1992 on the old Usenet News thing and wonder what I was thinking when I was that 25-year-old person. But, but the internet is a record of things people have chosen to share. And so when you're looking subsequent to an event, you're looking for something that would confirm or deny or, you know, shed more light on an event that happened, that's an investigation. That's using social media to investigate what might have happened. If we're talking about a tool that is sitting out there sifting posts in social media and saying, "Oh, we saw someone mention gun, so we need to dig deeper into that," that's surveillance. And I, I think, I think we still have to, to split hairs when we're talking about what tools exist and what they do.
Carol.
That's exactly the, the, the direction that I was, that I was just wanting to explore more with the council about intention. And I think actually, as even as a layperson, I think surveillance is more umbrella and it's the use of the surveillance, and as you were trying to make the, I think it's surveillance. And it's surveillance technology and potentially surveillance databases. And maybe Dave Smizer could weigh in with an example that I'll, that I'll tee up in just a second. But is there, is the intent to control all of the activity? Or is part of the exempted activity, if you are using a surveillance technology exclusively in an investigatory capacity, is, is there an intent that that has to be, that that has to have been reviewed and approved by council in advance? And I think of the example that I was hoping maybe you would talk about, Dave, is the, the state has a database that they use that has facial recognition.
Yes, Secretary of State has a database that they use facial recognition and we have access to it if we need it in investigative capacities, in that we can send them a photo, we might have of someone that's committed a crime. And they can get back to us with information as to look at these five people or 10 or however many. That's something that we have access to, it's not something that we own or control, it's something that the state controls. It's an investigative tool in that if it, if they were to come back, it would provide potential leads to follow up on. And then we'd have to go through the list and see, you know, which ones are close, which ones aren't close. Is there anything that would, would lead us to believe that any specific person is, is related to the investigation for whatever it is we're looking for? But yeah, that, that's a database that's been around for quite some time.
So I, I guess what, what I'm asking is, is it the council's intent to, to control that activity, that investigative activity in any way? Because if there's databases, like I think we, there's a long list of databases that we did not generate, that we access of various types. And we only access them when we're using them in an investigatory capacity. So would all of that, as long as that is the activity, investigation, would all of that be under exempted activity? Or is it the intent of council to control that? If it's, if it meets the definition, otherwise meets the definition of surveillance technology, surveillance database, whatever?
Grace.
My personal opinion and the way that it's, seems to be currently written is that this applies to all surveillance technology regardless of the use. And I think having a surveillance-first investigative purpose is not applicable here. I think we're getting a little lost here with forgetting some of the layers potentially, that this ordinance is just defining what applies and what is the process for approval and reporting, that there is, would be required to be a use policy on each specific technology. And so in my mind, that's where it would come in, say, we're using social media monitoring software and here's how we're allowed to use it and here's how we're not allowed to use it. And we are using these other items that are classified under the definition of surveillance technology and the separate use policy would define how we are allowed to use them, not this ordinance. So I think that this ordinance would apply to all surveillance technology as written. And then the use policy is where there would be some of those kind of other defined processes of what is allowable and unallowable use for each technology.
I, I understand that that's what, that's what you're saying and that's what the ordinance says and that's the intent that you would have it, that, that that's how you would have it be used. I'm interested in hearing if that's the intent of the council overall, because that's going to change our approach to this. If investigative activity is being, is being included, that, that just creates a, a lot more concerns.
Hey, lots of hands, we'll start back here and work our way around. Sharice, Mary Alice?
Sharice. So according to what you're saying, or at least to what I'm hearing, you're saying on a case-by-case basis, every time they needed to use social media software to investigate a particular case, that they would have to come to city council to get permission to use that software? I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is what I'm hearing, if I'm, if you're not saying it, that's fine. You're not saying it.
If I am me, um.
Yeah, I'm asking you.
I'm, I'm asking the chair for permission for the floor. That is not what it says. It would be laid out to where there would be a use policy in place for each technology. So the continued, each specific use of a technology would not come to council for approval. There would be an approval to use said technology and approved use policy on how to use such technology. And also clarifying point that social media monitoring software, I believe, is different than going on just using Facebook. It's using a monitoring software to predictively analyze certain posts.
Okay.
So when, when we first brought this up, I, I was thinking about the investigation piece and the surveillance piece. And it, to me, they are two different things. Surveillance is, and I'm just going to use the LPRs as an example, surveillance is monitoring indiscriminatory in some fashion. And, and the collection of that personal data that's being stored. And, and when we originally talked about this, there were some concerns about, you know, how the federal government in terms of their, their current method of operation, would they be able to access these databases that were this mass surveillance, so to speak? And so I, I did draw a distinction between surveillance in that capacity versus investigative tools. And I do, I do believe that should be the, the differentiation.
Chandra.
I essentially was going to say what Mary Alice just said. I think that investigation and surveillance is different and I don't think that we need to have, say, over investigative alleyways or whatever you want to call it. And I think that like, for your example of social media, like Carol said, like if it's out there and they go and find it, that's an invest, during the course of their investigation, it's out there for the, what did James say that, it's out there for the public consumption. Whereas if you're just, you know, just constantly having some pro one to say gun or something and then you're going to go dig deeper into that person, that's something totally different, that's surveillance. And I don't think we, we could be over surveillance, but not necessarily investigation.
James.
Yeah, from my, from my standpoint, I, I do make the distinction, I'll use the facial recognition database as an example. If we have a picture of someone who was part of committing a crime and we send that to Springfield to say, "Do you know who this is?", I don't look at that as being, that's investigative? That's like having a fingerprint and running the fingerprint. That's like having a witness give you a license plate and running the license plate. That's a part of investigation. Now if we have software that we're running on body cams or, or dash cams that is identifying who the people are that you're driving by, that's surveillance. Without, without having a reason to collect information on those individuals, that's, that's the kind of surveillance that we're talking about. I know it, it's frustrating for people because they hear surveillance and they think, they have a clear idea in their mind what that is. They might, you know, surveillance might be, "This house has been robbed five times and so we're sitting outside that house and watching it more often." That would be surveillance, but that's because of an event and something's going on in that particular location. It's not surveillance state, over, over surveillance where we're collecting on information on everyone just in case something happens that we feel like we need to know who was there and what they did. Protest are a good example of that, right? Facial recognition. Facial recognition. At a peaceful protest would be what I would consider to be the kind of surveillance that shouldn't be going on. So... No, no, it's not. It's observing a crowd and identifying who's in the crowd so that later you know who everybody was there. That is problematic, right? That is problematic. And so, in any case, you asked, you know, what individual council members think. I think that I'm okay with having this conversation in terms of that kind of mass surveillance, that collecting, identifying information on people just in case. That is the thing that I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about using tools for investigation when there is a specific cause to use those tools.
Grace.
Yeah, I appreciate hearing some of the input as well. And I did just want to say to that point about, I think the issue with trying to decipher an investigative or surveillance use is that they're intertwined. It's a spectrum. There's probably some overlap. I think that's why it's focused on the technology itself. And then again, the use is defined in the use policy. For the example of using facial recognition on protesters here locally, at some point, it becomes an investigation when there's felony charges on the protesters. Now they may have a warrant, and now it might be an investigation. I think that we can't so clearly define what's an investigation and what's surveillance, and where is the line between those. So I think that's why it needs to apply to the technology. And then the use of that technology is defined in the policy, where we would specify things like if there's a warrant, or if there's consent, then that's an authorized use of the technology. And if there aren't those things in place, then it is not authorized to use it. So I just don't see how we could so easily separate that when there's going to be some case-by-case bases.
Chandra, we'll work our way back.
I would think that a crime, when a crime occurs, that's...
Can I say something at some point, too?
Yes, after Chandra.
Yeah, I would think that a commission of a crime would be the start of an investigation. And that's how you determine an investigation is beginning. Not when, not necessarily at the stage of a warrant upon the commission of a crime. That'd be the differentiation between investigation and surveillance.
Jaya.
Yeah, thank you. I think Grace's example is an important one. I also am a bit concerned that I feel like a lot of this is actually answered in what's already been provided to us. So we have had draft versions of this ordinance in front of us for months. And I think it's problematic that some of these questions are just coming up now and that a lot of them are already answered in what has been provided. So, you know, I think it's important that we have a conversation to make sure that staff are clear in terms of what information is needed. And I think, going back to the original question that I heard at least, is, you know, does this apply to all departments? I can say that for myself, and going back to a point that Mary Alice brought up earlier, some of the urgency is around how this could intersect with what's happening at the federal level. And that is something that's going to uniquely affect, could uniquely affect our police department. So to clarify for myself, the intent in trying to get this moving would be to make sure that it's clear to our residents that this council, and future councils presumably, would not support Urbana Police Department using surveillance technologies to do things like track someone who's coming from out of state for abortion care, you know, collaborate with ICE. And again, I'm not saying that our police department would do any of these things, but it's putting in place the protections that feel particularly needed at this moment, but also have been talked about for years, literally years. So I would, just to reiterate, I think that the way it is drafted answers a lot of the questions that people are bringing up tonight. I think that nuancing and making sure we are clear what is considered investigation versus surveillance makes sense, but that's something that should be in writing. But again, the example of the protesters, you know, our state's attorney is moving forward with criminal charges against people who were protesting. So, and they're using information, you know, because those people were out there in public. So where that line is in terms of surveillance versus investigation, that's the prime reason why it would be important to have a policy about how whatever technologies might intersect with those two pieces would be needed.
Mary Alice.
Yeah, I just want to kind of expand a little bit because we've been talking about the protesters. And I think at issue, first of all, I want to say, none of this happened by Urbana Police Department, Urbana staff. Everything that everyone is talking about with the protesters happened by the U of I and by the state's attorney, which is county. So I just want to be clear that the city of Urbana is not arresting people for protesting and then giving evidence to the state's attorney. And we are talking about the city of Urbana's policies here. So in terms of protests, and I think what my distinction here is, is that the reason that, from my understanding, that the university was able to locate these protesters is because they were surveilling, right? If, and that surveillance, and then they use that surveillance to then identify people. I believe somebody said that there were drones taking pictures of license plates and then ALPRs. That's surveillance. And so I think there is a clear distinction there between what is surveillance and what is investigative. We don't have any of those devices right now. We don't have a drone. We don't have ALPRs. We don't have any way of surveilling our population at the moment, to the best of my knowledge. And I'm not talking about databases. I'm just talking about the technology pieces itself. So let's for a moment say that there was a protest at the courthouse in the city of Urbana. The only way that we would be able to take pictures is to physically put somebody on the street to take pictures of the protesters. We don't have any way of taking, you know, a mass download of all the video streams of people there. So I think that there is a difference. And I think that we can draw the line between investigatory and surveillance. And I think we can get those definitions there to make it clear to everybody. That's the direction I'd like for us to go.
Did you have something, Sharice?
I just want to kind of clarify as well is, you know, I know that the... People are afraid of being watched. And you're mostly afraid about being watched by the federal government, which we have no control over. It needs to be understood that should they decide that they want to surveil people crossing state lines to come and get an abortion, they have all the stuff that's needed and the personnel to do that. They don't need Urbana Police telling them that Susie went to Planned Parenthood. Should they want to surveil undocumented people and have someplace to, you know, to do that, they have the abilities to do that without any assistance from our law enforcement at all. And they have the equipment, because Urbana definitely doesn't have that. So what I am worried about are the ripple effects of us not having certain things that we would need to use for investigative tools and that may also fall under a particular definition. When the pandemic was happening and the looting was going on over at Marketplace, somebody actually put on Facebook, "Bring your backpacks, your bricks, and your family." That was a planned thing. So, you know, the fact that he put it on Facebook, it wasn't anything to investigate, really. He put it out there for everybody to see, also committing a federal crime in doing it. So I want us to be mindful of ripple effects of how, you know, us not having some types of equipment as well could be harmful to the public. Because I want the public to feel safe as well. But there are certain things that we can't cover just locally because other forms of government have more power than we do, period. Not just with our, you know, our software, our hardware, and equipment or non-equipment. But they just have the power to come in and do certain things. And I want us, as a council, but also public, to be mindful of that while we're discussing this.
Okay, to try to move this conversation along, I want to go back to my first question. And that was expanding the scope to all departments. Mary Alice.
Can we have a straw poll vote?
Absolutely, yeah. If you want, because that is a change that showed up in version four of the ordinance that was brought to council last week. This ordinance has been evolving over time. It's been responding and reflecting feedback that you've gotten over the past few weeks that it's been discussed. So it's not like it's been a static thing. But the expansion of the scope last week was a significant change. And that's what we wanted to get an understanding of. Because that will mean other departments also looking at the technology they have, whether it is on this list, whether it should be added to the list. A drone, a fire department could use a drone for many different reasons, none of which has anything to do with surveilling the public or solving a crime, but just investigating buildings, looking at, you know, there's lots of reasons. They used a drone to look at the mural that was being painted on the, it wasn't the fire department, it was Mass Transit District drone. They used to look at the mural that was being painted on the parking lot across the street. So we need to know about the expansion, so.
If you made a point of clarification, that drones are not covered in the current definitions.
What is?
The use of drones is not considered surveillance technology in my understanding of the current definitions.
Is there a reason, so that's an exception?
I don't see a definition either way. I would think that if it had some biometric capability, like facial recognition, that might be covered. I don't see anything that explicitly says the use of drones on the current definitions.
Okay, so that would be an exception. All right, that's good to know. That's an important clarification. Body worn cameras does need to be added because that's required by state law. As an exception, correct. Okay, can I get a thumbs up for including all those? Let's see, how do we want to word this? If you want to expand the scope of this to include all departments, please raise your hand. Pardon?
Just a minute, we also have one person remote. So I don't know if we want to do a roll call, straw poll, or at least make sure we get the remote person?
You can tell us if your hand is up or down, Jaya. So we have one hand. Jaya, up or down?
It's down.
Okay. Two up. All those who want to limit it to police surveillance technology, thumbs up. Three, Sharice, what's your position? Okay, three to two. Jaya, okay, four to two. Is your thumb up?
I didn't vote. To limit it to police surveillance technology, was that the question?
Yes. Rather than expanding it to all departments at this time?
Oh, yeah, we answered that one. So I said no to expanding it to other departments.
Okay, good. That's all I want right now, all right. So it's going to stay focused on police surveillance technology? That's helpful, that's helpful. Any other direction? I also have a question. I've been looking for examples of these ordinances in the state of Illinois. And so far, we've found one in Oak Park, but no others. Is anyone aware of any others in the state of Illinois? Because that's useful to have ordinances that are being applied under the same laws statewide. Okay, looks like Oak Park is the only one, unless you don't. Mary Alice.
No, I just wanted to ask for a second straw poll, if that's okay?
Sure.
I'd like to ask for a straw poll on dividing surveillance and investigative into two components. And this ordinance would just be focused on the non-investigative surveillance.
So surveillance policing technology.
And I think on a port of order, I don't think that we've defined those, what would be investigative versus surveillance, even enough to have a straw poll on it.
Okay, I guess I can ask, can we put those two definitions together? I mean, I'm happy to look through. I think Chandra gave a really good example of how to delineate between the two.
That's a question I asked at the very first time we discussed this. So we've been talking about the difference between surveillance and investigative. If it hasn't been written down, I agree that it should be.
Grace.
And just had another point of consideration on that. I think it is a little premature for tonight. I think we would need to define and really piece out, what do we call investigative versus surveillance in any kind of legally meaningful definition and application? I think one of the other issues is, what do we call a crime? And what do we call investigating that? And a crime where? There are plenty of neighboring states where it's right now illegal to get an abortion, and people could come get that here. It's not illegal here, but it's illegal in another state. So they're investigating it for a legitimate investigation, even though it's legal here. What if they're coming and they're doing mass checks on immigration status? We don't do that here, but that might be an investigation for a crime somewhere else. So I think it gets really dangerous, what you're calling an investigation, and by whom, and a crime considered by what state or what other entity possibly. So I think we really would need to have definitions if you're going to say something like that.
I think that's really well-defined by state law at this point in time. And it's been in the news. Governor Pritzker talks about it quite a bit. What we have chosen to do in this state, that doesn't mean it won't be challenged, that things might not change. But that stuff is pretty clear. If we're going down to what we can, are we calling a crime a subjective definition at this point? I think we're really going down a rabbit hole if that's where we're going to go.
Chandra.
And I thought we were talking about the actions of the Urbana Police Department. Like, I don't think that the Urbana Police Department are going to be investigating immigration statuses, or if you're visiting the Planned Parenthood. I think we need to, like, keep it focused on what we can control, or who we... I don't want to say who we can control, but what we can control.
Grace.
I think that is an important piece here. And, you know, some of the motivation here is that this is beyond just our city and our department, that these entities and jurisdictions share each other's data and what other entities would have access to it. And that the use policy for each technology would, in theory, be the thing that defines how it could be used, not only by our department, but any other department or entity that's also accessing our data.
Sharice.
Chief Boone, could you answer any of those hypotheticals?
Well, let me first say, Councilwoman Bishop captured it perfectly. We're governed by state law. We won't do investigations with respect to immigration. We won't do investigations with respect to abortions. That's not our purview. A lot of things that we're talking about, folks, there's oversight already in place. I'm just going to try to work with you the best that I can to get a resolution because it's important. But I do want to highlight, while I have the mic, the social media software is a software... But I do want to highlight, while I have the mic, the social media software is a software that is able to capture individuals' personal information if they're talking about a crime. For an example, if there is a shooting, and suspect A communicates with suspect B via social media, there is software that will identify that individual, his phone number, and where he's located. That's the software that this ordinance is referring to with respect to Boston. We don't have that. I just wanted to put that out there while I have the mic.
Can I have it?
Go ahead, Jaya.
I think there's a simple solution of just including that language, right? That, some of this, again, we're talking about transparency, right? We're not talking about just, you know, pieces that might need to be in place in the future, but for, for our residents to understand, right? So there's no reason why we can't include language saying that, you know, obviously Urbana's Police Department will enforce our local and state and laws, but in compliance with, with those, sorry, trying to talk and be sick at the same time. But basically, just to clarify what, what was just said, right? I think there's, there's, that's a way of addressing some of those concerns, is just to be able to, to include that language within the ordinance.
Okay, we'll give it a stab. Did you want to still have a, do you have suggested language for a straw poll, or are you okay? Mary Alice? Okay. Okay, thank you. And with no further business, before this meeting, we stand adjourned.